Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. We're happy tonight to have with us our Foreign Rescue Services with us as we discuss the business of the upcoming new fire department. Ms. Steele, will you please call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Gibson? Here. Dr. Orth?
Here.
All right, look around, find everyone. Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
And Mr. Nikosian? You have a quorum.
Okay. I'm going to ask that you stand as we have our pledge allegiance, our ovation of our pledge allegiance by Mr. Ashley Crisco.
Heavenly Father, as we gather today, guide our hearts and minds to work together effectively and find common ground. Grant us wisdom and understanding to make wise decisions. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Crisco. At this time, we're going to open the floor up for public comment. I'm going to ask that you limit your topics on the work session agenda only. So the floor is open. Public comment.
I do have one comment that was submitted if no one else is coming up to the front. I'm over here.
Okay. (laughing).
From Kenny Hogg Senior from Gloucester Point District. Tonight you will discuss the Main Street Firehouse. You will talk about ownership, the cost, and ways to fund an investment, and a very important element of our county infrastructure. Are we going to finally see this board and administrator handle this infrastructure improvement and investment like professionals? Or will we see the eight of you continue to facilitate the wants and desires of a handful of people? I do not agree with building such a large firehouse on Main Street and suggest a smaller house that is EMS-heavy and firelight is more mission-practical on Main Street. Heavy-fire assets and light EMS should be located at the Old Page School property. We have one ladder truck that, along with other heavy assets, should be positioned at a central location like Old Page. Thus far, your discussions pertaining to the FY26 budget have not included any discussion on cutting expenditures. Now you intend to raise real estate taxes nine cents, along with raising personal property taxes one and a half cents. Over the last 10 to 15 years, you and your predecessor have clearly demonstrated how strongly you believe parks, recreation, tourism, community engagement, excessive raises for administrators and department heads, giving our tax dollars to nongovernmental organizations and various planning districts, propping up businesses on Main Street, and financially facilitating Main Street NGOs by renting our library and health department spaces from them instead of owning our own infrastructure. Well, it is time to tone down the social fun and games party that you have enjoyed for so many years and prioritize legitimate government functions like taking care of our infrastructure. Once you borrow money for the fire station, where is the money going to come from to bail utilities out of the hole you have allowed it to sink into? Waiting until current debt is retired is not an option any longer because the neglect of our infrastructure is so extreme. Utilities needs more capital financing now. They also need significant help with operational financing now. The operational money is going to have to come from the local tax base because only a fool would borrow money to finance operational costs over the long term. Creating an ordinance that dedicates all meals tax revenue to utilities would be a great start. It would demonstrate commitment by the board and administration to not only the people of Gloucester, but also to the moneylenders that will be relied upon to finance greatly needed capital projects. The eight of you have a lot of work to do to gain the confidence and trust of utilities, customers, and the community. The citizens of Gloucester are looking forward to each of you doing what is right. Don't let us down again. Those are all the comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cronin. I guess we will move into... Oh, there we go. Thanks, sir.
WL Johnson, Assistant Chief Six with Gloucester Fire and Rescue. The comments that Mr. Hogg made, there was a clarification that was placed in that as a continuation on his message that he sent out. That was his understanding is we only had one ladder truck in the county. He wanted it mid-county. That was corrected, and he apologized for his lack of education on how the two departments were set up, not knowing that Abingdon has their own ladder truck and we have one. The other problem with the comments that were made about the page site is response times from there and also call volume. That's one of the lower call volume areas in the county where that would be by the page site, and it would take extenuated time to get there on dispatch if we were responding from home due to the number of people that are in that area that are volunteers. So with it being located in the courthouse, as we've demonstrated through all the studies that were done on that, call volume is way up, plus the membership for response is high for a quicker response. So just wanted to clarify that with his statements. That is in his Gloucester 411, if anybody wanted to go through that and read it, where he did apologize for the lack of knowledge of not knowing that there was a ladder truck at each end of the county and response times. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Susan Austin from Naxara, and I just want to say that after going, attending the Daffodil Festival this weekend and having the fire department end the parade with their participation, it was very exciting and well-received, and I don't see how anybody could object to fire trucks on Main Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on with discussion. I think the way we'll start is, I think we'll start with the fire department, let you guys just talk to us, ask us questions.
Thank you, sir. We did prepare a small presentation that may answer some of the questions, kind of introduce the whole concept to the entire county who could be watching, understanding some of the theories we went behind in building where we're building, the cost analysis that we've done along with the volume. So if we could get the presentation up. So this is the current mock-up of, rendering of what we hope that the fire station will look like going forward, and we did bring Mr. Keith Triskel with us, who's our architect, in order to help facilitate this. So as most of you all know, the fire department was founded in 1937. It disbanded for a short period of time during World War, the World Wars, and then reestablished in 1947. Currently, we have 165 active members on our rule with several dozen other honorary members still part of our membership. We are running increasingly higher volumes of calls every year, and we'll show you a little bit about that in a little bit. I'm going to turn it over to Keith Triskel now to go through the first part of our slideshow.
Thank you very much, Joe. I'm Keith Triskel with Little Diversified Architectural Consulting. We've been working with the volunteer rescue department for several years now on the feasibility study to renovate their facilities. The task actually started with an evaluation of their existing location on Main Street. That is a facility that's about 12,000 square feet. It started being built in the late 1930s and has been renovated many times over the years. After working through with them to identify their program, the size of the new station that's needed is about 25,000 square feet. What that was done and what that expanded size was needed to address is the apparatus bays are undersized and don't fit the apparatus that is needed to fight fires and provide emergency medical response, to the degree now that the department is ordering special units that fit in the doors because the units that are regularly available just actually will not fit in the station. The industry has changed a lot over the years. There is a lot of focus now on contamination separation between the living quarters of the fire station and the apparatus bays. That was not worked into the original design just because it was just newer trends and newer knowledge that is in the industry. There's very little to almost no accessibility compliance across the station. Many of the floor levels are at different elevations. There's a very small lift that gets to the public areas on the second floor. The mechanical systems are at the end of their useful service life, so those need to be replaced. And as the county gets more populated, the department is going to be transitioning more from a respond-from-home model to something that is staffed 24/7, and the facilities in the station don't meet those kind of current requirements and best practices. So initially, our evaluation looked at either renovating or building a new station in the existing location. Because of all the different construction types, the mechanical systems, the different floor levels, renovating was simply not feasible. So a new station was proposed, and we worked through concept design, building up a cost estimate for this project. One of the things that was apparent with this is that the renovations and the construction was extensive enough, there was no way they were going to continue to run calls from that site through the duration of construction, so a temporary station would need to be built at a cost of about $1.5 million. This was kind of one of the main drivers to the department deciding to move to the alternate location. One, to save money on the cost of building a temporary station. Two, a lot of concern about what this would do to the culture and the membership numbers if they were in a temporary location, not on Main Street, out of the view, and not a place where people would want to be. The proposed new station is proposed as a combination development on the site. The front part of the building you see is the fire station and the residential quarters and administration quarters that go into running the operation. The rear building is a dedicated training facility. A large component of what the volunteers do is offer training to their members and surrounding communities in fire and rescue and EMS. As of 2023, when the project was put on hold, the estimated cost for the hard cost, so this was just the construction cost, not including furniture, equipment, and other things that need to go in the building, was about $15.5 million. So, a few images. The design was, the department was very concerned about what this would look like in downtown. They wanted to have something that was complimentary to the rest of the architecture along Main Street, so that led to the material choices of red brick, white trim, some cast stone elements. They wanted to replicate some of the other forms of the buildings and the size of the buildings that you see up and down Main Street, so that led us to push and pull the facade back and front to help break down the scale of the building, step the parapets up and down, similar to some of the other buildings you see. As far as the site plan goes, trying to tuck the parking back along the sides of the building as much as possible, and the training building was, and training classrooms were put in the rear, again, to help reduce the overall mass along Main Street. Building floor plans, administration and public spaces are in the front. In the center, the private spaces where the bunk rooms, showers are, and in the rear are the main living quarters where the staff is during the day, so kitchen, dining, and exercise facilities. And then the apparatus bay and all the support spaces that go with that are on the left-hand And the training building that is at the rear is comprised of three smaller classrooms as well as one large meeting space that has an operable partition, so it can be divided. And again, this was separated off with the idea that it could be used independently from the fire station, so operations for emergency services wouldn't be impacted by anything that's going on in this building. As of our last estimate, which was done in October of 2024, projected hard costs are approximately $16.2 million, but this does not include LEED compliance.
So, we have routinely said that we would like to keep ownership of this building in Gloucester Fire and Rescue and have you fund us, so it's like you would fund, you currently fund us to purchase any of our equipment, any of our stations and upgrades. And so we wanted to highlight some of the cost that we thought we would be able to save because we wouldn't be required to do all the normal things. We will comply to the, as posed by a question I've seen in here, we will comply to the high-efficiency building model that we have, our codes and compliances we have to stay with. However, we, we don't, we didn't know, and we thought, we've seen through other projects that we may have to have some other energy efficiency programming out there. And one of the ones we picked up on was the LEED compliance for energy efficiency. And we kind of wanted to highlight the additional cost that if it was a county-owned building and they needed to require, needed to be required to have that, monies for that compliance where we would, as a private incorporated company, we would not. So LEED compliance fees, just for the beginning of it, additional fees for management, commissioning agent, a building envelope consultant, registration review by the U.S. Green Council is estimated at approximately $200,000?
What is the U.S. Green Council? Use your microphone. So I can really hear you.
What is the U.S. Green Council?
It's the administration that oversees the LEED program, the US GBC, United States Green Building Council. So they have come up with the criteria that is defined as LEED, so it's a set of points and criteria that you have to work through a scorecard and achieve a certain number of points to be either certified silver or gold or platinum.
Does that make the building more expensive because it's a green building?
Certain aspects do, yes.
Some other costs associated would be increased material costs, general contractors' administrative time, and this total could be from five to percent to seven percent of construction cost. We estimated that roughly at $869,000 to 1.2 million. So potential cost to make it a LEED certified building is 1.1 million to 1.5 million at our estimate. This is all estimated numbers if we were to be required to pick one of the certifying bodies to, for efficiency, and this is one of the most common one used and one that we are closest to being able to make compliant with our building.
So, one question. So that 1.1 million or 1.5 million, was that included in the 15 million?
No, that would be, that would be an additional cost. Next slide, please. So, now, those are additional costs we think were going to happen. Now we want to illustrate to you the, what we've already contributed to this project through Gloucester Fire and Rescue. This is monies we've already spent. So approximately 1.495 million in purchasing of the properties. Demolition of the structure is 83,000 in '61. Property tax expense of 25,000. Phase one resource reports, another 7,000. 13,000 in property appraisals and A&amp;E expenses, the increase of 606,000. I do not believe, there's one number that we did not get in there, because I was not able to get a good, exact number for you, so I didn't want to report it out, but we had also an asbestos abatement problem that we had to manage through the hotel, the old hotel. So we're about 2.2 million that we've contributed to this project already. So some projected costs that Gloucester Fire and Rescue is still planning on maintaining throughout this project is a soft cost, and that number has fluctuated, that 633,000, that can go up or down. It is really a rough thought right now, especially with the tariffs and everything else going along the lines. Another 378,000 for the A&amp;E and construction for the architecture firm. Our construction manager, we're estimating to be 150,000. And then we're going to have an owner contingency of 5%, which will be 800,000, that we will maintain for this project. So, kind of in summary, what we wanted to do is, we know this is a huge undertaking, and we know there's a lot of concerns that the county and the residents have and the board supervisors have, so we wanted to express our appreciation to the residents and the supervisors and all their help and give them some assurances. And these are assurances we are willing to put down in paper, on writing. We are already working on this with a lawyer at this time. We are willing to draw up a contract to turn over all Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue properties and equipment at the time, at the time we no longer fulfill our obligations to the citizens to provide emergency services. I know that is a big concern amongst a lot of the public and maybe some of the board, board supervisor members, but I believe that's an assurance we are willing to give you. It was one that was always in our mind. It was always our intention, but we're willing to put it down on pen and paper for you now. We will contribute back to the county $1 million to start the process of construction. We will turn over the current properties on Main Street, still owned by Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue Corporation, at the end of construction and beginning of operations at the new station. That would be our current site where we're at as a station, the old doctor's office behind us, the parking lot and small office building off the other side of Walker, and the, it's the Walker House, correct? The Walker House at the, at the front of that property. All stuff we had acquired throughout the years in order to make it so we could expand in that area if we had to. We were, along with all the other costs and concerns, you know, we thought we may have to expand that road and make movements there, which would have definitely increased cost of price. If I could get the next slide. This one's a little bit harder to see, but pulling data for the last five years, or since 2019, you can see where our call volume has happened. The courthouse area, which spans from right at the Walmart Light to just this side of the 7-Eleven by the hospital and down Route 14 and up Belroy Road a while, obviously has our biggest call volume. That also hosts at least three of our living facilities for seniors that we are able to respond to at rather quick notice. The Walter Reed District is another one of our large districts that holds two more live-in facilities that are on the north side of our, our area, but is also currently within three to four minutes of our response time from the new and the old station. So those are, so those are some of the numbers we started pulling when we started looking at placement of where this station was, is where our call volume is and how can we reduce volumes to other places. But if you notice that James Store is at 219, that is almost up to Matthews on Route 14 and up Berks Pond Road. That is still a significant number, and moving us out of the courthouse drastically increases our response time to that area. The courthouse was built with a nice hub-and-spoke manner. It allows us to access many parts of the county in a rather quick time, most times of the day. And we'll be able to answer any questions anybody has at this point.
Okay. Do we have any questions from any of our board members? Yes.
Can we return to the overview site of the firehouse showing the training facility So, okay, so, so the training facility, what is the additional cost for that training facility? And can, can some of the training facility be included in the main building as opposed to making a separate building? Is that possible? I mean, do you anticipate having, go back to the drawing with showing all the seats and chairs and the auditoriums and things like that. Do you anticipate having like 50 or 60 people in there for training?
Absolutely. Not only, sometimes do we have 50 or 60 people for our trainings, but on our monthly meetings and other events, we can easily hit 100. With 165 members, that is our area to get together and have our meetings and so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Board members? Yes, sir. Mr. Nikosian?
Sorry. Couple of things that, that I want to piggyback on that question. I have, see, I shy away from not 20 years with the fire service, which has no bearing on today, except for one thing. I have been in that building when that room has been full to capacity and both of our classrooms have been full to capacity. So we do, we have and we do, more than I can count, had all of our training spaces full at one time. And so much so that when I sat on the board, we've had board meetings in alternate locations to give up our space so that they can train. That's number, that was, I just wanted to throw that out there. The second thing is for you, Joe. Didn't they, didn't they tell us, or haven't you told us, that if we had built that temporary structure, that that temporary structure for 1.5 million dollars, once the station was built, if we had built it where it currently sits, once the station was built, that temporary structure would be taken now? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Can I suggest that we tick down these questions? Go through these questions and ask the fire department to give us a response. I know some of them have been answered already, but it would be nice to go through and tick through these questions so that the public will know what the questions are and the fire department can respond.
Some of the fire department's probably seeing this for the first time.
I know.
This board back in August of last year, answering question number one. Yes, we passed it to be built on Main Street. Yes, sir, we did. Absolutely, we did. Five to zero. I can pull it up in the meetings in minutes if you want. I think that we, we, we need to work on some of these because the fire department has offered in the past and offered again tonight that when they're unable The bigger issues that we have before us are the facts of ownership of the property, which I think, being that we don't own any other fire stations in the county, I don't think we, we need to get into owning a fire station for this one, because they're willing to turn these things over to us at such time that they're unable to fulfill their duties. That being said, they're currently responsible for their own maintenance issues at their buildings, and I, I think that it would probably cause us some, some, some heartburn to have to take in another building to, to, to run the maintenance on, in my opinion. And I'm not going to go through these line item by line item, because some of this we have to figure out, and I don't know if all of us here tonight can figure these out to the best of our ability. I have, myself and Mr. Bizani have gone round and round with the procurement processes for us. I think we should make some of our folks available to them, but I, I think that they would be able to get a very good builder to, to build this, because it's a fire department, and those people seem to like to bid on fire departments, my two cents.
Okay. Mr. Hudson?
When and if the department becomes paid, is there a room somewhere that we could move EOC there that wouldn't create issues, that we had dispatching at that site while it's being built?
Why would we want to move the EOC?
Well, right now, the sheriff's department needs more room in the building they're in now, so eventually it would be nice, because I would assume that the fire chief, when it becomes a paid department, they would be in charge of emergency management, like most other facility, or other counties. That'd be the main reason.
So, here's, here's, here's the thing with that. That decision still rests with the board of supervisors.
I understand that. My question was, is there room for it? That was the question.
The, the other thing is, I, I have no knowledge that the sheriff's department needs more room. You can, all right, well, then maybe they should have been here too, because now, now there's more new information being presented. I mean, how can we have a discussion if we don't all have the same information?
Well, I just ask a simple question, is there room?
Yeah. So, I'm Sean McNulty with the fire department.
Thanks, Sean.
When and if we ever get to the point that we can't fulfill our duties, and we become a paid department, we're gonna turn keys over to all of our facilities, apparatus, everything that we own, to you. You're gonna hire a fire department, and what you do with that training facility is your business at that time. At this time, it's our building and our business. At that time, it's yours, so yes, that'll be up to you and the chief.
Is there any, right now, there's nothing built and designed in it that would be easily converted to that?
No. No, because none of, none of the telecommunications, none of, none of that is even in the thought process. It's, that building has been designed around what we need in training, meeting, and breakout rooms for training.
So, in the process, and I know by then, technology...
One more, one more, one more point, because I see where you're going. During times of hurricanes, and I'm assuming that's when you'd want to evoke the, the EOC, we often will man our station fully, bring families in, and they'll sleep wherever, including in that room, and they're not gonna be able to sleep if you're in there running an EOC. So while we have it, it's unlikely that it'll be used for that.
I'm not saying to make it, I'm just wondering, is there a way that we can easily convert it in X number of years? That's my question.
I'll turn that over to Keith.
That's where I was.
I mean, usually in EOC, that's mostly a technology compliant, or...
Right.
Piece, and so you need the communication, you need the screens, you need the, the parts to come in, and that is relatively easy to retrofit into a facility.
Because, I mean, right by then, whenever it is, hopefully it's not soon, but technology will have changed.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bizani?
Just talking to Chief Clemens, would it be possible to build a second floor, to put the EOC up there? While we've, while we've gotten everything mobilized, just go ahead and stick up a second floor up there. Anything's possible. A second floor would be pretty costly, just because you'd need elevators and things to it. I think it would depend on the amount of space that's needed for the EOC, and where that could potentially fit on-site.
Let me also, we have also started looking at, as some of the property around there comes up, that we may want to purchase that for future expansions. There are some areas that might be able to move on that way, and maybe you make a, down the road, if we're able to grab, grab that for the county, and make stuff a little bit a bigger footprint, then maybe you'll have room for a separate building that you could at that point build for an EOC. We have started even talking about that sort of subject. How do we help in the future with fire rescue and emergency services? How can we make it so we can expand and don't get landlocked again? When we did do our programming and designing of this building, we did consider that in unknown how many years, that it would be a career, and there would have to be more administrative spaces and all that, so when we planned this, we planned so you would be able to have a fire headquarters for your fire chief, paid fire chief, on top of us, and the administrative support that they need. So, as long as we keep our footprint well, and we look out for options, there may be ability later on to expand, to build an EOC on the complex, which I believe probably at the time, if needed, would probably be a cheaper, and I'd have to defer to the architect, because he, he's the one that really talked us out of a two-story building in the first place, on expense-wise, just showing us the money figures. It probably would be even cheaper to allow another smaller building on the complex, if we're able to acquire those lands in the future, and still make yourself have a, a public safety site, especially with the, right-of-way is going on to Calhoun Street, out to Route fourteen, possibilities, and some other possibilities. We back, the land we have backs up to Mann Avenue, so you'll have more abilities to make a complex in that area, depending on storm drains, you know, the Chesapeake Bay Act and all that. We did leave a lot of green space, so that's one of the things that helps us in our footprint altogether. Is that helpful, sir?
Mr. Dr. Ohr?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank you guys for taking the time to meet with us, and to give us the presentation on the building, and for the citizens to see, you know, what is going to be a pretty neat and very beautiful facility for Main Street, which we know that's where it's going to be located. Piggybacking on Mr. Bizani's question regarding the questions we have here, you know, these were generated by our lawyer, Mr. Wilmot, at one of our meetings, when we were discussing the fire, fire department, at which time Mr. Crisco said we should meet with you guys, but these are the questions that came up that need to be clarified, you know, as we move forward, because this is obviously a very significant undertaking between the two groups. You know, obviously, the financial burden on us, we're willing to take on, but there are questions that I think need to be resolved, before we move on. I think they can be resolved fairly easily, but I don't know if we're gonna resolve those right tonight. If you hadn't seen these questions, again, these were raised by Mr. Wilmot, and then put in writing, and sent to each of the board members about a week ago. So, you've already addressed some of those regarding ownership and all that, which is great, but there were a bunch of others that had to do with financial stuff and all that. I think Mr. Wilmot, given that he will be looking carefully at contracts and everything, you know, he's the person that we turn to to make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, and their punctuations are correct, so that we make sure that, you know, everything is done smoothly and there are no hiccups, because there have been enough hiccups in the past. We want to get past this, and get this job done, and have you guys in your new place as soon as we can, and get the construction going as soon as we can, because we were told, you know, given the timeframe for some of the site plan development, which we will try to move forward as quickly as possible, it's gonna be probably six months before shovels on the ground, as far as I know. According to Mr. Baines was commenting on that the other night. Correct, Mr. Baines?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, we totally understand the, some of these questions, especially about procurement and stuff, and we have already started preaching some of these questions and, and discussions, and we're more than willing to discuss it further. And we are already planning, and with the help of the board of supervisors and the county administrative staff, to help us navigate those pitfalls and those landmines, so that we're not breaking any rules. We just want to express our desire to do it as cheaply and, and as cost-efficiently for the public as we can, and with the help of the county administration, I think we can easily work through all these issues, and procurement and so forth, following, you know, good practices. Granted, as a private entity, you know, some of the procurement laws aren't specifically necessary for us, however, some of them are good practice, and we want to make sure we use good practices when we're trying to use the taxpayers' money to provide our services, which is something we do on a regular basis, in our budgeting and our current procurement process. So, our idea is to always use the best practices out there that we can.
Okay. Who, thank you, Mr. Chair. Who will be the program construction manager in this project? The county or the fire department?
The fire department. We'll, we'll, we've hired a construction manager, and the, the county has worked with us a little already, providing us input and access to engineers, but we hired Mr. Jay Hobbs as our construction manager, who is a well-known and well-respected, and actually recommended by the county administrator for this project.
Yes, Mr. Dr. Ohr?
Okay, so I brought this up, a point to one of your members about a year ago. There are obviously different portions of this building that are really neat. Many places try to get, think, people, parts of buildings with names on it, that someone might be willing to contribute a significant chunk of money to have their name placed on it. Have you all considered a fund drive to specifically try to address individuals that might be willing to make a significant contribution, that part of the facility, let's say the training facility, might be named after someone with a significant amount of money? Now, you know, that happens in a lot of universities, you know, VIM's just received a hundred million dollars from a guy named Batten, so they named that, that whole building, or the whole school, that way. So I don't know whether that's something that you want to consider, is a, a fund drive significantly to enhance, because I guarantee you, there probably going to be a lot of unintended costs as this comes to fruition. It would be great to have this as a lead facility, because while it might be more expensive initially, I think the savings in energy will more than make up for it over time. So, anyway, I just want to throw that out, you know, it happens. I know I received my fund drive, my letter from you guys about two weeks ago, asking for money, which we always do, but this could be something that could enhance the, the building for the, the future.
Yes, to address your comments, sir. We have actively had a capital campaign going on for several years, trying to raise a large donation amount. We've, we had a capital campaign committee that went out and tried to administer different programs to help us bring in a large amount of money. They just have not been as, no one's willing to drop a couple million dollars right away, or no one who has addressed us directly have. So, yes, we, we, we would love to find some of the, I don't know, we'd have to have a discussion amongst the, the board and the membership about a naming rights, but if somebody wanted to drop half the price of the facility on there, I don't know if we'd be too far against it, but I have to...
I think JJ was offering that, but I'm not sure.
And, yes, I, I understand the, the desire for the lead facility. When I'm, and I'll, I can let Keith also put some input on this, for the most part, we have all the elements of the lead facility already. We are doing high-efficiency mechanical stuff. We are looking at all those high-efficient things. The things that, the cost for lead is more along the lines of paying for those special inspections, paying for that special administrator, paying for all that, that adds up quickly. It's not that we want to design a less efficient building, we want to design a really efficient building, because we know it's, it's the taxpayers' money that is, are paying our, our bills, and we want to live in a, something that doesn't leak. We want to live in something that's high-efficiency and, and is not going to contribute to the downfall of our environment. However, we don't feel like we want to pay one-point-two million for someone to tell us we did it.
Right. You, you checked all the boxes and you did everything, but we need one-point-two million dollars to tell you you did it.
So, if, if any of you have ever been to Christopher Newport University, every building that you see there was done by some kind of philanthropist there. Sarah Forbes, David Studian, the David family, McMurray family, the Pope family, which were former CEO in Smithfield. There might be opportunity, there are some folks here, you might, we may be able to solicit to help, you know, contribute, as, as Dr. Ohr has indicated, that might be interested in doing something like that. We'll see.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing is, you guys are gonna have needs for the future, because just as we've seen in the past, the equip that you guys have to buy is very expensive, and given the number of runs that you make with your ambulances, what do you replace? One ambulance every few, every few years, given the miles they run on?
So, we, again, another thing we do on a regular basis with our budgeting, is we program out for ourselves for twenty years on our, when we are looking at submitting our budget to you, and we start accumulating money for different projects in that period, so we don't, so you don't see a spike in budget requests for us. So, say this year, we needed two fire engines and two ambulances. Well, we could ask you for an additional six million to pay for that, but what we've done is over the, over the years, and that actually, because we've been able to do that and invest our money and use other funding sources to help offset some of those costs, a lot of times, yes, we increase our budget throughout the years, because we have to, because, you know, nothing's cheaper any day, these days, but we also are able to absorb some of those extra costs throughout the years, where, hey, this truck may have cost an extra fifty thousand that we didn't budget for, however, because the way we've managed our money to be as efficient as we can with this county's money, we don't necessarily have to go out and say, oh, we were wrong, we need fifty thousand more this year, a hundred thousand more this year, or a million more this year for fire trucks, barring any catastrophic event. And as most of you guys know, as you alluded to, the, we are, our ambulances, we program to be replaced every ten years. We have five ambulances, we do one every two years, and we actually are, on the last set of ambulances, or in our program, we have done, gone to rebounding, saving us a hundred-and-fifty thousand on each remount of the ambulances. So we are purposely looking all the time for more efficient ways to manage the county's money and be responsible citizens.
By the way, I appreciate your answers, because, again, we're videotaping and people are watching, and for people that don't understand how you operate, I appreciate you're going into the discussion on this, because it helps other people understand your needs and just how important you are to the community.
So, as a supervisor that represents the courthouse area, one of the biggest questions I get is, when is the fire station gonna be built? And everybody knows there's money involved, but the, the number one question I hear is, when is the fire station going to be built, and how long is it going built, and how long is it going to take for it to be built? So, my question is, if we put a shovel in the ground, if this board gives you, gives fire department the money, and it's turned over to your project manager, and we put shovels in the ground, what is, and I know Mr. Baines has told us about the site plan and the project, and going back and forth. But, once the shovel is in the ground and work is started, how long do you anticipate it will be before the citizens of Gloucester see a building or buildings on that site?
It would be about a 14-month construction process, start to finish.
I think everybody here is very interested in having that 14 months get started and be finished. And the decision may not be totally, or details may not be ironed out tonight, but I think in order for that final design to come forward, and we can get that site plan process going, I think the decision on lead needs to be made. And a couple of concerns, and some of them are legal, so it might require the county attorney. I know that what was stated is absolutely correct. If this was a county building, it would require lead certification. What I don't know is, would we end up having to go through that certification, because it was something required at the date, at whatever point, or maybe there's five new different kinds of programs? But the idea that if the building ever does become the county's, and it didn't have that certification, is it going to cost so much more later on to get it? The $200,000 that was mentioned, because, well, I guess let me go back to say, all the public fire and rescue departments that are built now are lead qualified and certified. And we've checked with some of our neighbors on what they're paying, and we're not seeing 200,000. But even if it was 200,000, where I'm having the heartburn is the million plus. And if the idea is to build it the correct way, and it's just the certification part, it might be worth spending that extra 200,000 so that the building is lead certified. There's never any question, because, again, the legal thing that, what, if I am saying it wrong, then Mr. Willmont can correct me. But I believe what he said, because this is a new law that started in '24, there has not been a ruling from the Attorney General, there hasn't been any case studies on it. And so, he said, because it's over 20,000 square feet, that if it was owned by the fire department, it may not need to be certified. But it wasn't a definite. We don't have other fire, I mean, I don't know if the architect knows, or anybody knows of any current new construction, current and new construction that's not going through that and going ahead and getting certified. So, I just don't want us to have a regret over something that's a little bit. And if I'm wrong, that it's 1 point, whatever million, then there's something more I need to understand about it. Because, again, if you're already doing the, the things to make it high-energy efficient, it shouldn't just be but the certification part.
So, Ms. Steel, this leads cert, I've never heard of it. It's the first time I've heard of it. And that's okay.
This is state law.
Is this something that was signed into law by Governor Youngkin?
Yes, it was. And that was one of the things that I said, we're a conservative state, and if our conservative state passed it, and our conservator, conservative governor signed it, it must be a pretty okay thing. And, and it's required for buildings over 20,000 square feet. And I have to thank Jay, because it was something that we were not aware of. I had not heard that it came over into our area. Lead has been a voluntary program for us, anybody in Gloucester, but it hasn't been mandated until now. Other localities have mandated lead on their own, but we had not.
It's almost like an unfunded mandate from the state.
It, that's a whole nother argument about whether, but I would just say that, you know, coming down to the fact, it is law, and it was passed by a conservative, you know, gubern, governor who said, I'm signing this. So, I, again, I don't know, it's not, to me, it's not worth squabbling over a couple hundred thousand, when you're looking at this size of a project. So, if there's something else that would keep it, or there's a savings of a million dollars or something, then it totally is worth having discussion. But I know the design cannot be finished until that's decided.
Mr. Hobbs, and you have something?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. Ms. Steel, the, the reference to the construction cost is raw cost for lead certification, because of mostly the administrative time that's put forward, not only by the architect, whose charges have been included in the $200,000 estimate, but also the general contractor has to track start to finish, submittals from start to finish. The construction increase itself is, comes by way of things like cabinets that cannot be imported from, from China. It has to be locally sourced, recycled materials. There's going to be a premium for all of that. Trusted professionals that we work with have confirmed, it's typically 5% to 7% construction cost increase just for lead certification.
Sorry, I appreciate that detail. And I think the tariff situation may change how we feel about local, anyway. But I just know that most of us feel one way or the other, there were mistakes made with Page Middle School, whether it was built where it was built, or whether how it was built. There's regret. And I just don't want to see us have regret. And I also don't want to see us waste money. So, I'm not weighing in on this, it's y'all's decision, but I'm just throwing that out. Let's make the right decision, whatever that is.
One other item is that, once you have lead certification... One other item. Once the building has been lead certified, you're bound to maintain that. It doesn't just end with the plaque on the wall. You have to maintain that throughout the course of the building's life. That comes down to materials that you're putting in for replacing floors, walls, paint material, et cetera. So, that's a continuing cost that you're going to have to incur.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hobbs.
I, I don't know the exactness of the law. I don't know if it, I know it's a high-efficiency building law. I don't want to get into it. I haven't read it to say that it has to be lead certified, or it has to be discertified. And maybe Keith knows it better than I do. But I believe the law just says it has to be designed to be high-efficiency. But I'll let Keith answer that.
But, and I don't know the specifics of it entirely, but I believe it does say you need to comply with one of several compliance methods. So, lead, lead is one of those. I think Green Globes, there's a couple of other ones that you need to comply with, whether that means you need to be certified, or design it to meet those standards is, probably would take an attorney to look at and confirm specifically.
And for the most part, we have designed the building to be very close to lead certified, minus some bike racks and a charging station for EV vehicles, or the potential to have charging stations for EV vehicles. You don't even have to actually have them, you just have to have the potential. So, that means you run conduit underneath the, the wall to the parking spots.
I have a question, number 10 on the list here. It says, I want to make sure we get, I get the clear understanding of this. It says, will construction of the station be secured through the county's procurement process, or by the GVFRS independently? And it says, provided the terms of any county financing for the station allows for them to receive, proceed with the construction without going through the county's procurement process. Can that be done?
So, I would say that goes on to further discussion that we would have to have with the county attorney and whatnot. However, we, we build buildings now with the money you give us through our own procurement process. So, I would assume that if we could build facilities now, without this large-scale project, with our own procurement processes, that we would continue to be allowed to.
We did ask that question of our, Davenport, of our financial advisors, and our, also had our bond counsel involved in that. And it does seem to come down to the funding mechanism, and also the way in which those funds are dispersed. So, it appears that if we are to provide just a lump sum of money in the form of a grant, then there should not be any requirements on that funding. However, if this is a, a process where the county is going to be dispersing out bond funds, and it directly to vendors, et cetera, that's potentially going to fall more under a procurement type of law. I think the funding mechanism will kind of determine that, at the point in which we're ready to decide on that.
That's something we don't know right now.
That's going to be an unknown when it comes time.
Yes. Mr. Crisco?
When we met with Davenport, was that last week? There's been so many meetings, I'm losing track. Last week or last meeting, we have the ability to not go after bond revenue to do this without, we can do this with a bank loan, was my understanding, which in that case would not require our procurement process. It wouldn't be as, it would be the easier path, as you mentioned.
I think it's going to come down to the way that those documents are drawn up. And I will be the first to admit, this is not something I'm super familiar with, but I know that in other borrowings that we do with the county, those funds are required by whomever the, is issuing that loan. So, we have a loan right now with a bank, with Bank of America, for our utilities equipment. It is different, it's a very different situation, but they require, Bank of America requires us, as the county, to go out and have US Bank hold on to our money. And then, for each time we want to go draw down money, we have to provide our receipts. We have to ask them for permission to provide that disbursement out to us. So, it's possible a bank could provide more restrictions on how that funding is being paid out in comparison to simply doing a revenue-type issuance through the open market.
So, we would have to wait on that until we figure out which way we're going to get the money?
And I think that if the idea is giving it as a grant, even if you do a bond on the, with a mortgage, so that that's what's the collateral, I think you can do it. Then the further question, though, comes of how much money do you borrow? Because, and if the price has already been established, and if GVFR is going to hold 800,000 in contingency, then it might be that you can do it as a grant. And that was something that we were not aware of. And, you know, first of all, I was like, I didn't think we could. And where we have provided funds before and not intervened, or had any procurement requirements, it wasn't a direct loan that we were doing. In other words, we were providing a payment to the fire department, and y'all go for it. And this is a loan, and that's why I, you know, totally believe it's different. So, I think there's a way, but it would be with the grant, meaning that the board would provide the funds, and the interest and all the responsibility and everything, interest gained, all the payments, everything would be up to GVFR, and it would be just like a let go completely. And if that was going to happen, just my suggestion would be that, and I think it was Davenport's too, and Maria's or Ms. Calloway's as well, that we don't go out for the borrowing until you know you have a price. So, the quote goes out with an understanding, or the bid goes out with an understanding that it's going to be good long enough to, the time that it takes to get that money in. Because you don't want to go borrow 15 million, and you needed 16 million.
As Mr. Crisco said, when Davenport presented us, he was at our meeting, he presented us with an awful lot of information that I think we need to take into account. The pluses and minuses of each of the borrowing components, because a lot has to do with when we want to borrow the money. The timeframe between when we get that amount and when we can borrow, correct? One was, you know, a short time period, the other was a much longer time period. So, I think, you know, this is just something that we're going to have to watch carefully, as this project moves along, to when it goes out for a bid, and when we want to get that money. Because we certainly want to get the best price that gives us the most bang for the buck. So, I think that, again, it's going to have to be dealt with very carefully, and with Davenport, hopefully in the background, to help us understand what we have to do to get this done correctly.
Wouldn't the contractual relationship be similar to what the schools did in the renovation of the high school? Where the schools are responsible, and they have their own program manager. They have title to the building. How does that legal, I mean, that's probably Mr. Willmont's question, how that works as we move forward?
I would just mention they have an elected board, so it's a little bit different.
That's the answer. So, but, yeah. So, what about, well, how about benchmarking, like York County, they just recently built a fire station. How do they go about their contractual relationships to, to build that building? And we asked that question.
Yes, actually, I have a spreadsheet up of, we talked with seven other loc, six other localities, and York County was one of them. But those are county-owned fire stations, so they do go through the procurement process. And they, in York County, the most recent building was bid out in 2018, and it was a design, bid, build, which is the same thing. They had a design separate from the construction costs. But it's, it's a little bit of a different situation, because the county is doing 100% of the project.
That's something we'll have to work out, right? Between these fine folks and the county.
Did, with bond counsel, and I believe Mr. Cole said it, but I'm not sure, were there any stipulations on any of the financing where the county would have to own the building? None.
Not if the, not if the grant, but the requirement of the middle person, and how you spend the proceeds, and how much, how much money you can spend of the investment, and all those things come under our end.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. JD Clements, chief of Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue. We certainly not will reneg in what we have presented to the county, as far as turning over our existing structures to the county in the event when we get a new station. But my only concern is, tonight, if we give up that ownership, and we get into a cost overrun for some reason that nobody foresaw, and we needed to go out and borrow money on our own to get through that process, we would lose the ability to have any real estate to borrow money on. So, I think we need to think, leave that option open.
Can I, Mr. Chair? This seemed to be the best option. Right now, we have a lease agreement, not a lease agreement, we have collateral on our new courthouse even. And we don't live in fear that somebody's going to come take it back. So, that part is okay, we're making our payments. The other facilities that you have could be used, because we're only talking about the new one. And, and I understand that that's going to be a long time, that you would have that, not, not have the ability to borrow on it as collateral. Now, it might be that at some point, you're paying off things, and then you get some ahead. On the county side, we would have the same problem. And I think it's a little bit more significant, and I don't mean anything bad about that, but it's just because we're looking at all county operations. So, in order for us to do the agreement like this, with putting up county buildings with collateral, because we already have other buildings that are up, we looked at the value, we're going to have to put like the whole campus up. The jail, the sheriff's department, everything would have to go for collateral, when we looked at the values of these buildings. And, and so, that would mean the county would have its hands tied for anything. The only thing that maybe we'd have the exception on is, of course, utilities as an enterprise account, or the schools where they have their facilities. But if we needed to use our own facilities for county needs, we, they would be tied up in that same thing. So, I'm, I'm hoping, I don't know what the value of your other facilities are, but I'm hoping that that would make up for the fact that this one would bind you. The other option would be that you would still have the ability to come back to the county and say, now we need to do this or that, and we've still got the mortgage on this building, and we can't get a loan. Because, again, we're all in this together. So, if you all needed something that you can't get, you're going to probably be coming back here, anyway.
So, Ms. Steel, is that something that, something that Davenport told, did they tell us that?
Yes.
They did?
When we asked about the When we asked about the collateral, they said that it generally goes off of the insurance values. So in reviewing the most recent insurance valuation, that actually happened last year because we changed insurance companies. We did not have any single building that was worth enough to be used as collateral for a project of this cost.
Multiple fires?
It would be, yes, nearly the entire Main Street complex. I believe building one and two were worth a combined $7 to $8 million, just to put it into perspective. And those are the two main buildings of the county complex.
Mr. Chair, got a question. So given these questions, these were questions raised by Mr. Wilmot, I'd like to ask Mr. Wilmot, how do you want us to work with the fire department to get these answers to questions to your satisfaction? What do we do? I mean, I don't think we're going to answer all these today, but in order for you, our county lawyer, to be comfortable in the process, what do you recommend and how do we move forward to get this done? And again, I don't think this is going to happen tonight.
Doesn't sound like you're going to be able to do that tonight. I think those are among the questions that need to be agreed to collectively by both bodies. I don't know whether or when that's going to be feasible to do, but in order to determine the funding mechanism, the amount to be funded, where the structure is to be, although Mr. Crisco indicates that he believes that that's already been decided, whether the county has any design input, whether it goes through the county procurement process, how much is to be borrowed pursuant to what mechanism, how much of assets of the fire department are to be put up and when, who's to ensure the structure, who's to maintain the structure, how long is the structure required to be utilized for fire and rescue purposes, either both in the immediate future and beyond the end of the financing. They're all questions that need to be addressed and answered, hopefully amicably, hopefully quickly. But I think each of us in this room have a different opinion as to the correct answers to those questions. So I wish I had a talisman, a magic ball, a panacea, a way that this could be done easily. I would think perhaps a committee of perhaps two board members and maybe two fire department members and maybe a few other folks, rather than everyone here, initially could try and hammer out a tentative, possible arrangement that's acceptable to the committee, and then come back to the two respective bodies to see if that committee's recommendation is agreeable to them. But I don't know whether it's really feasible to resolve much in this forum at this point in time. So I wish I had a better answer. I just...
That's a good answer. So what do we do about getting a committee that could come up with the appropriate answers that we could see, both boards could see and be comfortable with? That's what we need to get to.
If I were appointing a committee, I would appoint Mr. Crisco, and I would point, on behalf of the board, and I would point someone whose point of view might be a little not in line with Mr. Crisco's. And then I would have the fire department appoint two of its members, and then I would go from there, because this is very difficult.
As... Let's get this right so that we don't have any more hiccups. So, Ms. Steele, what... Or, Mr. Chair, how do you want to move on this? Because we could sit here all night, and I don't think we want to be here all night, but why don't we move forward with Mr. Wilmot's recommendation and have these answers done that could be presented to both boards so we can move forward?
I do... I agree with that.
Be like a memorandum of agreement that comes out of all this?
Yes, sir. What I envision, and of course, I'm just the attorney, and I'm just recommending, is whatever arrangement is ultimately agreed to by the respective boards would be memorialized in a contract or an MOA or an MOU, and it would outline the rights, obligations, duties, responsibilities of both parties with reference to the funding, operation, maintenance, insurance, termination, all of the aspects. Believe me, no stone will be left unturned. But I can't make that up. I could draft one, but it would be what I would want, and I don't think that's what most of y'all want.
We have started speaking to a lawyer to help draft a contract of sorts for this. So we have thought of this process, and we are willing to move towards a contract with you in the county with our lawyer involved and our people involved. That's one of the... In our presentation, that's kind of one of the things I may have not emphasized well enough. But we do believe it should be a contract, not a memorandum of understanding, and that we have a lawyer that we are working with already with the idea that we need to put this in place and move forward.
Well, and I would appreciate, and I like that. That's a great idea. I'd like to work with that person. But what I'm hearing tonight, and I probably shouldn't say this, but I will, that what the fire department wants is for the county to fund almost 100%, less the million and the current asset there on Main. The fire department wants to own the property. The fire department wants to own the building. The fire department wants to have 100% control over the design of the building and the utilization of the building. Does not want it to necessarily have to be LEED certified. So those are point, and I think doesn't want to have to go through the county procurement process, wants to be able to bid it, procure it, manage it, build it, maintain it, all of those things. And if that's what ultimately the Board of Supervisors agree to, that'll be very easy for me, because all it is is here's the money. But those are the things that I think need to be agreed upon collectively by both boards. Who's going to fund it? How much? How many assets the fire department are coming to the county, if any, and when? Who's going to maintain it? Who's going to insurance... Who's insure it? Who's going to design it? Who's going to control it? Who's going to have access to it? Where it's going to be? How much is it going to be? What financing mechanism is going to be utilized? How long is the fire department is required to utilize that facility for providing fire and rescue services, either both before funding is completed and a period of time after it's funded? So all of those things are the devils in the details. So I think I have a firm grasp of what the fire department wants, and you've laid that out lucidly. I think the Board of Supervisors, perhaps the ball might be in their court as to what they're... They'll agree to.
Yes, sir, Mr. Nicosia.
Mr. Wilmot, I have a question. So the county side works out there, and the fire department, they come together on this contract. Let's say 25 years from now, none of us are sitting on this board. Once that contract is signed to date, let's say later this year, first part of '26, is that ironclad for the duration of whenever? Or can they Board of Supervisors come back? I'm just asking. Can they come back and change it in any kind of way?
It can be structured to be ironclad. Boards of Supervisors cannot obligate themselves to future debts because of the Faith and Credit Clause of the Virginia Constitution. However, we can come up with an ironclad contract, which can't be broken without threat of claim of breach of either side. And what I had envisioned, and this probably won't work because I envisioned it, was that the county would finance the brunt or the thrust of the finance costs for the station, and that the county would own the land and the fire department until that financing was finished. And at the time the financing was finished, the asset would be turned over to the fire department. But the fire department would be obligated to continue to utilize it to service the fire and rescue needs of that area for a period of time, perhaps 20 years beyond that. But that's just one of 1,000 possibilities. So, yes, you could tie it into the period of financing, you could tie it into the period after the financing, or you could have no restrictions at all. You could give the money to the fire department, have them build it, and they could sell it tomorrow. So you could do that, too.
Mr. Chair, got a question. And this is actually a question for Ms. Steele. So we have our budget process in full swing, correct? And we have to adopt a budget in the next month. Do we need all this information signed, sealed, and delivered before we adopt the budget? Or is this something that can be done subsequent to the adoption of the budget? Because obviously, in our budget, we have the discussion of how we get the money to the fire department, what we have to do in terms of the possibility of adding some additional money from either a fund balance or whatever to make that bottom line.
I think I mentioned that we could do something potentially, and that it's a little bit different, but the suggestion was in the narrative of the budget resolution. Because the money, if the $1 million is... Everybody's agreed to that point, and even if it's there, it's like a grant. Until it's there, it's not really there. But we build it into the budget as a revenue source. We don't have expenses in the FY '26 budget. It's in the FY '27. So what I was suggesting was in the narrative saying, in the adoption of this budget, it includes the fact that the board will be financing and moving forward with the construction. So it's understood by everybody publicly. The good news about either of the funding sources, the bank or doing it with the bonds through this mortgage agreement, is that we can do it anytime. Where the other sources, we have to go, they do it three times a year, and we have to... So the minute we say go, the process can start. And the board will be having to approve that separately of a budget anyway for us to borrow that kind of money. So I don't think it'll interfere with the FY '26 budget at all. And the only other thing I would add, since I am going ahead and talking, is that because the... And this, again, will go back to the county attorney, because the fire department has already sort of started what in their mind and working with the lawyer, you know, sometimes we have agreements that are brought to... Or contracts that are brought to the county attorney, and then he reviews them, and so it's a starting document. Even if you're going to form the committee, you might want to have that document where it's stating the things. I think some of them are really easy to handle because it's the fact that you've already said, we're going to do, you know, we're going to do this for the life of this organization, and by federal law, when this organization dissolves, you're required to go, your assets to go to a nonprofit. Where the clarity would be is that if you dissolve and/or you need the paid... Because we know there's a lot of hybrid departments. But anyway, the question I would have, is it going to be that facility or all facilities? Those kind of things need to be outlined, and maybe it's a starting point that you all put what you want down with answering as many of these questions that are just for clarification. They're really not unknown on your part. You know, you're already willing to make those commitments. So it's just putting them down and then take it to the county attorney, who either could work with that attorney and then bring it to the board for consideration, or could go... The committee would have a starting document versus a starting list of questions.
So when this memo was issued by our esteemed counselor, did it not go to the fire department as well at the same time?
No.
Because it was not required to?
Well, no. It was...
I'm just...
So they can see what the...
Oh, I don't... And I don't mind. I didn't label it confidential, but I was asked by Dr. Orth at a board meeting to provide the board with questions that I thought should be addressed. So that's what I did. I didn't... I didn't offer it to any outside party. But I understood that y'all had the right and perhaps the desire to share it, and I envisioned that would happen, but I did not want to be presumptuous.
Clarify, we've got the budget process on this track. We've got the fire department and all these questions on this track. They can go in parallel. They don't have to be linked. Correct?
That's correct. We would put in the anticipated revenue from the fire and rescue department, which is good news that it went up to $1 million, if that's what the thing is. So that goes up, and that helps every little bit with our equations.
So is it the desire of the board to form the committee? It is?
Yes.
Okay. It's the desire of the board to form the committee. I don't have a problem, Mr. Crisco and I, if we would be the representatives from the Board of Supervisors.
You know, it might be good to get that contracted. You guys working on with these questions and move forward, but let's see if we can move forward quickly.
Would it be acceptable... We're going to continue to move forward in the process and getting all the construction documents and so forth going, so that the moment that we are of agreement, we can move forward with the process. So we are going to continue to spend our money creating this project movement and get things going. We already are getting site plan stuff ready, getting rid of plot lines and all that. And we will continue moving forward as long as we are all in agreement that we're moving forward in good faith to an appropriate resolution.
Correct. You okay with that? Yes, Mr. Sol.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sol.
Bruce Olds, president, Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue. Air Committee to meet with you and Mr. Crisco will be myself, Mr. Sean McNulty, and Mr. Bryant Van Aden.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I think we'll just work to... Bruce, if you and your guys would get us this information and your copy of your contract and the answers to these questions, we'll work with our board members to get what they want to see those answers to be. So, gentlemen, if y'all could send those to Mr. Smith and I, then once they get theirs, we'll set up an appointment to meet with them and go over these.
Yeah, this is a Word document, so maybe what we could do is do track changes and add our comments to you guys as soon as possible in terms of our thoughts. So give us a date when you want this information so we can get it to you and not wait till the last minute.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. North. Any other discussion? Yes.
I mean, I think the... Fortunately, the bulk of it is completed with what's been approved and everything else. And I mean, I would... I think right now, your attorney that y'all have, I would tell him to stand down till y'all got together, everybody got together, instead of spending more money, and get the initial amounts set up and then go from there. That would be my thought on the agreements, the contract between...
We'll do a rough draft first.
Yeah. And then that way, Mr. Wilmot and your attorney can get together after it's done. Be a whole lot easier that way. But I do have a question, and I wasn't going to ask, but I'm going to ask. I know it's been brought up, and I've been asked by a few people. It's a lot of money that's going to be for the whole county that we're going to pay for the mortgage of this property, and I know we're going to have to use that building as collateral for the loan. But it's been said that y'all said earlier tonight that it was y'all's wish to own the building, and it's been said y'all will own the building. And the question's been brought up, if the county had to own the building for financing's sake, one way or the other, what would y'all say? That would be my question.
I think the answer to that is going to be different for maybe one of us. Some are willing to die on that hill, and some are not. I'm a hill dire. I mean, we already own the property, the ground beneath it. How do we handle that? We're going to give you several million dollars' worth of... We're going to give you several million dollars' worth of property on Main Street, give you the property that we currently own to build a station on, and then you own the building. You don't own anything else that we currently have. Station four, current station one, station six, none of the apparatus. You have primarily paid for all of it. So it's going to be a different answer from each one of us.
I totally agree with what Sean just told you, but it's very important that we should own the building, control it, keep it up, and make sure it's done the way we want it done. We don't need somebody from the county coming in and telling us how to do a job. We don't come in and tell y'all how to run the county, how to fund us, but it's too confusing to get too many people involved in the mix. It's all that simple. We've got our board to go to, we don't have to come to the county administrators often and then come to your board to get permission to paint the wall from blue to green. We want it to be our building, our facility, and the day we give it up, you can do what you want to with it.
And to address, you know, again, I think we addressed some of your concerns in the comments you made, Mr. Wilmot. In this contract, we are intending to state that you will have, when we no longer conserve the public, then the county will get everything we have, all our equipment, all our land. That is the agreement that we have made as a board. Make sure I'm not talking out of my head, but that is agreement we've made aboard, and that has always been the, since I've been in this company 26 years now, whenever we've discussed the future of the department, we have always said, the minute we can't do it anymore, we will hand the keys over to the county, lock, stock, and barrel.
So in shipbuilding, when we build a ship for the Navy, there was a clause in our contracts called liens and title. We had title to the ship. We had to pay for insurance, we had to pay for any kind of damage that happened while the ship was constructed. We had title to the ship until such time the ship was delivered, and during the time that was under construction, the Navy had lien on that. So they had privy of taking whatever was left if they decided to terminate the contract for convenience. That may be something that, you know, we can look at as far as financing. I don't know how the banks or the bonds will do that. Who gets titled until this building is constructed? Do we have title to it? Or is there a lien that the fire department can have that supersedes that until such time that the building is complete? I don't know how the bonds will work, I don't know how the banks will want this. Will they want the fire department to guarantee the loan?
It was mentioned that the fire department would probably have to sign documents as well, even though they're not liable for the payments, but if the building was going to be given to them like start of construction, right? It's theirs from the shovel and the ground, they'd be signing these documents, too. And I don't, sorry, I think I had, I was thinking you asked another question, but it is a little bit, I think it's a little bit different than what we're saying, and, oh, I know, I was going to say, is if it is a grant, then it really is totally different because it's like this.
And we would maintain the insurance on it, just like we do now with all the facilities and the maintenance like we do with all our facilities.
That's what we did. We contracted with Lloyds London while ship was being constructed until such time that the ship was delivered, then we turned everything over to the Navy. But if something burned down, if something happened to the ship while we were building it, it was on us, not on the Navy.
That's why I believe the grant option would be, if we could work that out, would probably be the most satisfactory for all parties because then we would maintain that insurance. That would not be a cost that you would absorb, that would be a cost we would absorb on that, and we would allow for, that's just, then if something burned down, then it's on our insurance and so forth, or the building, or the construction company's insurance that would be required to be maintained during construction.
Yes, sir. To dovetail into that, if something catastrophic were to happen during the course of construction under your construction loan, there's a builder's risk policy that's typically carried by the general contractor. You may be able to purchase that yourself, but the general contractor is going to get better rates typically. So that's built into the original schedule of values.
Okay. Any further discussion? Straight with the committee? We'll get together when we're going to be meeting?
Get your documents.
Get your documents?
We'll call you, we'll have some answers.
Give us the call. Okay. So there's nothing else to discuss? Nothing else? All right. Need a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.[1788.21]